Everybody lost.
All right, good morning, good morning and welcome to Rankin County Board of Supervisors. This is our October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. I'm gonna ask Craig Slay, would you lead us in a prayer, Craig?
Father, as always, we approach your front praise today. Thank you for how you provide for us and how you bless us. Father, thank you for the rain that you've given us and I pray, Father, that we'll continue to be blessed in the manner, the same manner, Lord, consistently from you because of our obedience to you, Father, because we want to do the right thing. Thank you for these men, Lord, for their commitment to come, to do the right thing, to stand before you and before the citizens of this county, or to conduct the business of the county in a way that is pleasing to you. Father, I pray that you will just give them the wisdom and the discernment they need and give them a measure of grace, Lord, so that they can understand what is the right thing to do. Father, I thank you for our first responders especially. Thank you, Lord, that we can provide for them and they to us. Father, I pray that as citizens of this community, we will never take for granted the sacrifices that they and their families made. We pray this Christ may be with them.
Amen. All right, uh, thank you, Craig. I want to welcome you, uh, welcome you to the greatest county in the United States of America. Thank you for coming. Uh, we're gonna start with our public comments and Brett issue right out of the chute.
Morning, guys, how are y'all?
Morning.
Uh, if you have not seen the news, the governor lifted the statewide burn ban yesterday afternoon. Uh, due to the amount of rain that we've gotten in the county over the last week, obviously, the amount of rain we're getting out there today, I feel that it is in, in our best interest to go ahead and lift the burn ban.
Need a motion on that, Mr. Slay? Make a motion, you lift the burn ban?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Some public comments, I was gonna suggest that we, we go ahead and add both acknowledgement of governors and add you guys acting on the county to get the burn ban.
Add that to the agenda.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Bob, second by Jared to add it to the agenda. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
When Bob makes that motion, Jared seconds the approval of lifting the ban, uh, on our burning for Rankin County.
Thank y'all.
Oh, we hadn't voted on it. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Risk management, Guy Warner. And Paul. I believe Paul gave Ms. Laura the whole package that breaks it down in details and goes through each line. But as always, we just went ahead and did a quick sheet, a cheat sheet, that you guys could see the highlights of the coverages and the, um, premium levels and, and everything that we're going through. But at, at your leisure, if you wanted to look at it a little more detail, each one of you have a package that Ms. Laura has. But if you will, go ahead and undo it and take this page, the written out page, along with the very first page, and we'll go through this. The first line is your property insurance. And as you can see, quite a bit of value has been added.
Part of that's the, uh, new misdemeanor building.
And out to the side, you can see the actual premiums compared to where they've been in the years past. What we did is ask each agent to provide us at least two other options, which on the property, there was not one even remotely close to the rates that you have here. And if you'll look through the past three to four, five years, it's been with the same company. They've got a program that is very, very competitive, and that's who we've left it with. This is a line that is with insurance associate Stephen Wallace.
Okay.
The next part is your automobile insurance. And we did secure another quote through Travelers Insurance Company. You've been with FCCI for a number of years. And one of the main draw to FCCI is they will not recognize the Mississippi law that provides you not to have to pay claims on bump ends with sheriff's departments and parking lots. And, and that's one of the things that would reflect very negatively on the sheriff's department along with you guys.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't need to talk about negative anything.
Well, that's the reason we've been with FCCI. Now, you can look over to your far right, there is a difference in the premium, but there is a difference in the coverage.
Travelers will recognize that statute and they will not pay any of those claims.
So, and you know, for the difference, we even looked at and talked with Ms. Laura and Wanda about if you could set aside the money difference.
But we don't have the capability of paying it, do we?
Well, and here's another thing that we determined, that no more of a pricing difference than it is, it wouldn't take long to eat through that. So, our recommendation is staying with FCCI and renewal. Now, this is a coverage that is with Wellington Insurance, that had been with Mr. Dean Kirby for years and years, which Mr. Dean has sold out to Wellington and so on, so.
You've actually got twenty-five more units on schedule than you had last year. One of them, so that's one reason why the price has up overall. But the actual average price per unit has gone down just a little bit. So, that's good news.
Can we, and you probably already have, but put some emphasis on shopping Rankin County? Dean's out of it. I mean, for the same dollars, uh, if we can do it economically. Yes, you're talking about far as the agents? Yes, sir. Absolutely, goes, and, and Wellington has sold, you know, they've sold to a national firm. Right. And, and one thing you have always done is kept your money in Rankin County, you know, so. That's something we can definitely look at going forward or whatever y'all want me to do. And, and if anybody calls and, and asked about quoting it, you know, we'd entertain it. We did not have any outside agents call this year, so. The next line is your general liability insurance. And again, it's with one beacon, that's Stephen Wallace Insurance Associates. Normally, this is a package type deal with a general liability and the property. And that's, that's a situation where this is, um, the increase here is due to just the exposure. The more you have, far as auto, far as, um, property, everything is what, what drives the premium from the general liability portion. The next package is the volunteer fire. This is with a specialty company. It is again with Wellington. Uh, and I want to say they're one of the very few that has this program. So, this is where the claims have really, really hit us. Uh, they've paid over four million dollars in claims in the last three to four, six years. And, um, and you can see where your rate has not been jacked up out of, out of the norm. Part of the rate increase here is more units.
There's five more units and there's also half a million dollars more in value. They have, it's a great program, they provide all kinds of coverages on your property, general liability, the auto management liability, accident liability. So, part of it is they have guaranteed replacement costs on your fire departments. So, they'll have an inflation clause in there, so it's gonna go up a little bit on the value every year. But the rates have stayed really competitive compared to the losses that have been paid out in the last.
Say, that was huge a few years ago when we lost a brand new truck.
That, that one loss, uh, a couple of years ago at Pisco, it's like a four million dollar payout on that.
Your average rate per, like, fire truck is fifteen hundred and thirty dollars.
Per fire truck. I can't get that for my own.
It's a lot of fire trucks in there.
So, like I say, that would be very, well, everything else, we were able to get competitive other quotes and some other quotes to look at. Here, there is no one else. So, that's something that we need to really leave alone.
That, uh, the company that writes this, I guess, is AIC, they're the national company, right? And then Billy Horn and Mr. Wellington, those are agents of record for that company in the state of Mississippi, how that works.
I will look and see who else has access to that company.
No, that's fine, I was gonna make sure I understood the relationship, that, that really more so that the AIC was the only insurance company that writes or willing to get into this risk pool.
One of the very few ones that, that I know of that'll write this kind of business.
Well, guys, thank you, Paul.
Well, one thing I will say, like, like Supervisor Gaines said, Rankin County's a great county and got money and, and growing. And if you'll look down here at the highlighted, your, your premiums have really tracked just with your growth. I mean, it's been a clean, nice account, and we hadn't had any trouble securing, you know, good quotes and quality quotes for you. But if you got any questions, once y'all go to looking through that, reach out to us anytime you want to. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I think y'all have only been doing this for about twenty years, it seems like.
All right.
You always do us a great job.
Oh, business?
Make a motion to approve.
We have, whoa, whoa, one more I gotta add in. I'm sorry.
I like it when Jay feels good, you know?
I help.
Think I just missed him.
All right, we have Brad Calhoun. Brad, would you like to come up?
I would.
Brad is a candidate. And I believe gonna be elected to District Three Supervisor.
If everything goes well.
Yes, sir.
Um, I got a little project going on in Pocket, and it's one of y'all's building. And the ladies asked me this weekend if I could ask, uh, they wanted one thing for the county library.
Brad, which ladies? You said the ladies, which lady?
Regina Hudson. She runs the Pocket Library.
Library, okay.
And it's not any kind of letter and hadn't been anything, it was, used to be the old health department. And, uh, they were wanting some letters put on there, and it could be, they were fine with just Pocket Public Library or something similar to that.
It's our building.
It's y'all's building.
You know, I bet that's something, I bet you can get that accomplished.
But they've got some prices, and they can work from two hundred to five hundred dollars. And that's on land. Uh, they chicken on some in Pearl, they haven't got to email back on that.
Why don't they get a, why don't they get a price of what they want?
Let's.
It ought to have a name on it.
Let's get our maintenance people to look at it and see what.
You know, we, we have a millage set aside for our library systems. I'm pretty sure they ought to be able, you know, pay for this.
Well, we got a new, uh, senior citizen facility right beside it, it's a town, got a grant to build. And, uh, a really building part needs to come down there and just see that and the old library and kind of tie the two together. I mean, one of them's blue and gray, one of them's pink, black, and.
I think we could afford a two hundred dollar sign.
Let's, we don't need a motion or anything for, for our office.
That's what we're doing right now.
Discussion, yeah.
Guys, go down and take a look at it.
Yeah. Yeah.
What he would cause, maybe help out.
And I might get a vote or two out of this.
I bet you can.
Who's over our maintenance, none of Johnny's out, is Johnny still here?
He, he is on vacation for the remainder of his time. And, uh, JL is.
JL?
JL is.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. That's a real tough one, but I believe we can help you there, Brad.
Mr. President, I see Carl sitting out there seeing the, seeing the agenda somewhere else.
Uh, you need to come back to the mic and say that.
Uh-oh. Mr. Carl, do you need us?
I think he's in the later, later in the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, um, under public comment, I have something that, uh, I think, and he's not here, it's not for him, it's for the county, uh, something I'd like to recognize, or a person, and, uh, it's David Ruth, our coroner. We have an exceptional coroner and coroner's office in Rankin County. I have not received one call or comment that was negative. Whenever he goes out, it's always a negative situation. But every time I get a letter or comment, it's saying how much they appreciate Rankin County having a professional person in David Ruth that came to their home whenever their child or their husband or their son, whatever, passed away. This is difficult for me, he worked my brother's death, uh, and if you hadn't had an experience, maybe you don't appreciate having a great coroner, but, because it's just not somebody that you see or gets, gets thanked you very often. David has a history in law enforcement, he started about nineteen eighty or eighty-one, worked in law enforcement, worked with the district attorney's office, uh, worked as a deputy coroner while at the DA's office, got elected about, I guess, about eight years ago now. And, uh, six or eight years, I don't know, but anyhow. It's a person that don't get a pat on the back very often, doesn't get recognized, he's not gonna be on the front page of the paper. But I just ask you, if you see David or one of his people, and they were very small staff, tell them thank you. Because he's very qualified and could go a lot of places and do, probably make a lot more money. But I like him to stay right here in Rankin County and keep doing what he's doing. Okay? All right, uh, let's, uh, oh, business.
Motion to approve the October third, October seventh minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor? Uh-huh. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve, second.
Right on our consent agenda, Bob makes a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Daniel seconds. Any other discussion?
I just want to point out that number on our, uh, accounts payable, our docket, that's, uh, probably the lowest it's gonna be all year, so enjoy it.
All right. Jay makes a comment. All in. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, uh, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, Wanda, you up?
He's there.
Oh, easy.
I can do his section.
All right.
Item A, petitions for change assessment on two thousand nineteen rail and personal property assessment roll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion approved.
Item B, petitions to adjust the two thousand nineteen Hampstead exemptions supplemental roll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll make some motion, Jared seconds. Any, uh, well, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, authority to pay the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty MACA membership dues for the tax collector in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mike Harrison, road manager.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, request approval for AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a fiber optic cable route along and across stump bridge being installed between one thirty-one stump bridge and Pallett Bus Road.
Not where I live.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Daniel, second by Jay. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is that it? All right, Mr. Parka. You got a lot of stuff here.
It's gonna take them half the meeting to read it.
That's what I'm thinking. Man, you might want to bring a chair with you.
Well, and, and you know, normally I wouldn't hit you with all those words, but Mr. Lawyer was the one that came up with the words. But anyway, first item that I have on the agenda is the Hanley Circle Street improvements. And by the way, I placed bid tabs on all, all of these clearing, clearing and grubbing contracts. And we recommend the award of that contract to Thornton Construction in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second. All right, Daniel makes a motion, I second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Second item I have on the agenda is Andrew Chapel Clearing and Grubbin. And we're recommending award of that contract to Pearson Dozer Service in the amount of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-dollar thirty cents.
I'll make that motion on Andrew Chapel.
Yeah, you got yours, though.
What you can read. Yeah, second.
Come on, guys.
This is distracting, you know that?
Yeah. All right, I made a motion, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
It's about time. Uh, any opposed? Motion passes.
Second.
So, next item on the agenda is our Goner Road improvements, and we're, that's on clearing and grubbing again. We recommend award of that contract to Pearson Dozer Service in the amount of three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, Jared makes a motion, Bob seconds. Any other discussion?
I just have questions off. Um, this is for the whole project on this one, the other was for just a portion of it.
About half.
What are the timelines on both of these?
The contract time?
Yes, sir.
Hmm, I'd have to check back with my documents on that.
Okay, all right.
I think that I heard around a hundred and twenty days.
Either a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty.
On each one of them?
You're gonna need it if this, if it keeps doing this.
Yes.
No, you're saying that one of them's only a portion, you would think it'd be less days, but a hundred and twenty.
No, absolutely.
Okay. Good luck. That's all.
All right, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? My, uh, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is we're recommending approval of supplemental agreement number two on the Spelway Road, North Shore Parkway, uh, to add fifty-seven point two square yards of concrete island paving at the intersection of North Shore Parkway and Lake Shore Drive at a cost of eight thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll recommend approval. Second.
All right, Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is we're recommending approval of quantity adjustment, number one, on this, uh, LPA project, Spelway Road slash North Shore Parkway. Additional curb and gutter asphalt removal, excess excavation, in order to construct three concrete, concrete direction islands at the intersection of North Shore and Lake Shore. A total of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'll recommend to approve.
Second.
All right, Daniel makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jay, that's that area you're not gonna be turning the program, the delineators up?
Yeah.
Craig Slay?
I make a motion, Mr. President, we consolidate A, B, and C for public hearing October thirty-first.
Second.
Craig, I'll let you get turned around there before we do this. Uh, we have a motion to consolidate A, B, and C. And a second, a motion by Bob, second by Jay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, any opposed? All right, motion passes, so we will handle A, B, and C in one.
Same thing for D, E, and F to November the fourth.
Let's do this one. We need, I, I think we need to vote right now, don't we? Did I, do we, I think we motioned in second. Do we have a vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Doug, Dan, I want to make a motion to consolidate D, E, and F to November the fourth.
That, that motion was to set them, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right, now then, we have D, E, and F, and the motion by Bob is to set these public hearings for November the fourth.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Bob, a second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
This frozen item G is the continuation of the public hearing for the John Chambly conditional use permit at Green Oaks, this is District One. We'll open that public hearing again. Uh, Mr. Chambly is seeking a conditional use permit to have two dwellings on a one acre parcel off of Green Oaks. Mr. Chambly wants to build a house for himself and for his daughter to live in. He al, he also wants to place, uh, another house on the property, uh, for his grandson to live in. At one time, the discussion was the possibility of a manufactured home. The applicant has withdrawn that and has substituted an actual house, not a mobile home. Mr. Chambly is disabled, and, uh, he needs his family near him to be able to take care of him. The property does not have access to the public road, and so he has obtained, or will obtain, a driveway easement and a wastewater easement for, uh, for one or both of the dwellings as needed. We have documentation from the individual from whom the easement would, would be required indicating the ascent to provide that easement. And so I think Jared may have some discussion about the, the scope of that easement, but, uh, it looks like, uh, the things are falling into place as it relates to the appropriate authorizations to move forward with this hearing. So, at this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the John Chambly conditional use permit request. Is there anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. There may be some additional discussion, as we said, about conditions.
Yeah.
Uh, so if someone representing the Chambly family could come forward, uh, to answer any questions that may, that may come up, please.
Good morning. I only got a couple, I believe you got a, uh, be a thirty-foot easement, I think that's what you're working on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, the other thing is, uh, because of, uh, emergency vehicles, first responders, whatever, they need to get in there, fire ambulance, whatever, and obviously you got that potential. Uh, the driveway needs to be over about twenty feet, not just a little one-lane driveway.
Yeah, we was actually, uh, when we talked to the lady that gave us permission for the easement, we was actually discussed thirty feet.
Oh, really?
That way.
That's even better, that's better, I'm just saying, at least, yeah. Well, that's great, I'm glad, glad that's reached that. The other, other thing, only other thing I would ask, what size homes are you talking about putting in here?
Um, that, honestly, we haven't got that far as far as the, the.
We'd like square footage of the homes. Huh? Yeah, like square footage, yeah.
Yes, sir. All right, that was my mother just speaking back there, she said eighteen to twenty.
Okay. Eight, that's, that was what I was, I didn't want, I'd rather you have that, something like that, I think it'd be better, better for the neighborhood and everything, for a larger home. So, yeah, if you stayed like that, eighteen hundred, two thousand square feet, that's perfect. Great. I think, uh, I don't think, uh, I think you've answered everything we needed to hear, and I appreciate you working to get all this worked out, and I hope it all works out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, I guess the only other thing, that would be the health department, be the sewer wastewater easement.
I'm not sure where that stands, but.
They have the wastewater easement.
Okay, I mean, I know that's them, but you, if, so basically, we would approve pending, pending that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Actually, uh, as far as the wastewater easement, um, okay, never mind, sorry.
Uh, and wh, while, while the Chambly family is present, Jared, I, I want to clarify one thing so that there's no confusion on it. Um, what, what we had asked for as far as a minimum access easement was thirty feet. Um, y, your thoughts, Jared, were that the actual, uh, road bed, I'll call it, be at least twenty feet? So, whatever width of the actual road bed, the driveway itself, whatever width that's gonna be, they will need an easement that extends beyond the boundaries of that road bed for purposes of placing utilities. So, I, I wanted to clarify that. If you're gonna build a thirty-foot wide driveway, uh, you, you need to get more easement than thirty feet.
So, how much easement do you need outside of the driveway?
Uh, you need, you need about five feet on either side, ten feet total, depending on where you're gonna place it. But what we'd like to see is a thirty-foot easement with at least a twenty-foot wide road bed. That leaves you room to install utilities without having to go underneath the hard surface.
Forty to fifty foot, big foot.
That, that would be, that would be adequate for y'all's purposes. Okay, but, and so with that clarification.
Okay.
Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close that public hearing, Jared, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action, and the understanding will be that the conditions have already been discussed, and we would ask Ms. Renee's office to make sure that the conditional use permit contains the appropriate conditions that have been discussed.
I make a motion to approve under these conditions that we set. I make a motion to approve under these conditions that we set today.
Second.
Alright, Jared makes a motion to approve under the conditions that were set, and Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item H is a public hearing on the McLean Lodge LLC conditional use permit, Holly Bush Road, this is District Four. Uh, McLean Lodge LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine acre parcel, property zoned RE1 residential estate district. The property owner plans to enlarge the footprint of the mine in the future. The area will be reclaimed with a lake or expansion of the existing pond. The mining notice of intent has been submitted to DEQ. This time, we will open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the McLean Lodge LLC conditional use permit. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter, we will close the public hearing. I'll report, I think Renee told me that no one has called, uh, her office to indicate any opposition to the request.
Alright, uh, I'll make a motion.
Second.
And we have, uh, some conditions, I, I believe we, uh, have hours of operation-
Yes, sir.
Eight to four.
Yes, sir.
Won't need it today, but have a water truck available to where Holly Bush doesn't get dusty and keep the road clean, uh, we don't wanna track mud up and down the road, and, and we know how that can be with dirt pits. There will be haul routes, which that is a state-aid road that they can go either way out of there, uh, with, well, that's one of the roads we send them on. I have a, this'll have to be worked out, I guess, with Mike and Renee, possible bond, uh, which I think is pretty uniform now, but the uni, the regular, our normal things. Alright, I make the motion that we go with this, and do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, the next item for a public hearing this morning is the, uh, Bubba Massey, Bubba's Dirt LLC, uh, public hearing. Uh, Mr. Massey, uh, Bubba's Dirt LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a nineteen-point thirty-five acre parcel at four oh seven seven, Highway forty-three North. Property is zoned RE1, the applicant has submitted the notice of exempt operation to DEQ, this is a District Two parcel. Um, I'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Bubba's Dirt LLC conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, at this time, uh, it would be appropriate to discuss conditions and, uh, then take action on the request.
Yeah, I think the only conditions I was having was, um, just to operate, now, operational hours.
Yes, sir.
Seven AM to four PM, I think was the time, we're just trying to stay consistent on those time hours, so as long as there's no objection to that, then I'll be my motion approved.
This is gonna be access on Highway forty-three?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright, Daniel makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item J is the public hearing for the Oakdale Place LLC conditional use permit, this is at Baker Lane and Highway four seventy-one, this is District Four. Oakdale Place LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a self-storage facility at one twenty-four Baker Lane, property is, is zone C two. The facility will contain office space and storage warehouse space, as well as fully enclosed and covered parking, three-sided covered parking and open parking of all types of recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, motor vehicles. The applicant is proposing onsite hous, housing for two managers at di, different entrances to the facility. One of the residents may be, residences may be a loft-style apartment inside the existing office building on Baker Lane. Loft-style apartments developed in conjunction with commercial establishments are allowed as a conditional use in the C two zone. Site plan shows the first phase of development as where, as well as areas that would be available for future expansion of the facility with board authorization. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Oakdale Place LLC conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition, I know that the applicant's representative is here, if you have any questions, uh, at this time it'd be appropriate to discuss, uh, the request before the board.
We just gonna allow them to put apartments inside the-
It's only, it would only be one for a housing manager, uh, that's all he's asking for, is possibly, it's not a done deal, but-
It's typical to have one on a, on a big complex, this year, many storage units, to have a manager's house.
When you look at their global plan, it's pretty big, and, uh, I, I mean, I, I think at some point, they, they're gonna have to have somebody on site, I, I don't-
When you get, when you get that big a site, big a deal, it's commonplace to have a manager's house or-
For the record, it's, uh, this is the B and B electric property that has been, uh, a, I would call it a, an intense commercial use for many years, and so it's, uh, I, I don't perceive it to be as significant of a change in the use of the property as what's been there historically. I'm not sure how long B and B has been there.
Many, many years since before.
So, th, this has been an outside storage location, even I think predating our zone.
It was.
Okay, so it's- I, I don't, I, I only mention that from the standpoint that we have not seen, at least I'm not aware, I don't think we've got any calls, uh, not, we've not seen any, uh, any blowback from the community in the area, and it appears that the use is consistent, uh, at least insofar as it goes, albeit, uh, you know, the, the use that's been there has been B and B's own stuff, but the outside storage has been consistently utilized.
I was just paranoid about the last one, you know, that we allowed somebody to have a dwelling in a commercial business, they kinda went crazy and added a couple more.
Yeah, I recall that, I think that was in Daniel's district, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so we're familiar-
That was my only concern, you know.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing it up, the applicant's here to hear the concern that the board has, that there would be a creeping, uh, non-compliant utilization of this property for dwellings, which should not be in the thought process, this is commercial, it needs to remain commercial, and the board is willing to, at least as a condition, as, as a part of the conditional use, to make one apartment, loft-style apartment dwelling available for the purpose of onsite management. Alright.
I thought he said he wanted two.
One or two.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Well, he's gonna have two, but one on the four seventy-one end and one in the, on the Baker Lane end. The one on the four seventy-one end is probably gonna be an existing house that's already there. He's just considering maybe putting a loft-style apartment in the B and B, because, you know, it would be up higher, they could see over the entire property, it would just, if it worked out, that would be a good thing, I think.
Thank you.
Not, not a second loft-style apartment, but two houses, two onsite housing.
One loft-style apartment, the other would be, uh, u, using an existing residence that's on the property. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Uh, we will, we will have to have an approved drainage plan, uh- That'd be part of the conditional use.
Yes.
Alright, anything else?
Y'all already gone over what you want it to look like, I'm sure, huh?
Yep, we, we've got pages and pages of, that, uh, that you're welcome to look at.
Negative, as long as you get with it.
I, I think this is a pretty, uh, ideal corner, and my part of the district are out from, out from any city limits, it's not in city limits, uh, and we won't- Yet, yet. We wanna make sure that what we do attracts better things, and then, right now, B and B has been a great business, a good asset to our county, and, but they probably have sixty to a hundred trucks that come in there and park every day and night, and people coming and going, uh, I think this is gonna be better for the community, and it's hopefully gonna add lots of value, uh, a, and when I say value, a utility where people in that part of the county can use this as a, their business place too.
I wanna make sure y'all understand also that, you know, uh, there was one future parcel on four seventy-one where he was asking to get approved for a conditional use for a climate-controlled storage facility. You know, he'll have to come back later with-
Right.
The, uh, detailed site plan and renderings, but he had some proposed, that's right.
Yeah, that would be-
But that's included in this approval, um, or that use.
Yep.
If y'all approve it.
I wanna encourage while we're talking about it, I, I don't know, Mr. President, that it necessarily has to be a part of the conditions, but, um, I, I think the applicant understands the need to provide a really good visual, a face on these important roadways, both the Baker Lane side and the four seventy-one side, that, that those visuals, especially right there on the road frontage, need to be quality, and they need to be in keeping with what's developing in the area. The second thing is, we wanna make sure that we keep a really, a, a, a close attention on our buffer areas along the property lines, and to be consistent, uh, in making sure that the neighbors, uh, especially those who might be troubled by anything going on on that side of the fence line, that we can accommodate them with appropriate buffer.
He, he has done a pretty good job of taking care of that by getting options on all the property around him, except, except I think the very corner, the corner- Well, and Oakdale Church, and he, we have addressed the barrier between him and Oakdale Church. If my memory serves me right, the storage part will not front either Baker Lane or four seventy-one.
That's right.
That'll be reserved for high-end buildings. Uh, this is just sitting kinda off in there where B and B parked their storage or, or vehicles, a, and if you didn't know it, say, you wouldn't-
That's right.
Alright, I'll make the motion, uh-
Second.
With the approval of the drainage plan. Alright, I got a motion, uh, myself, Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, item K is, uh, is discussion of and potential action to approve an agreement between the board supervisors and the Rankin County Circuit Clerk to oversee certain aspects of the November election process, that would include, but not necessarily be limited to, the ballot prep, the election day equipment coding, the equipment prep and testing, election day support, tabulation and reporting, at a cost to the board supervisor not to exceed twelve thousand, five hundred dollars per election.
Yeah, I'm gonna approve.
Yes, second.
Alright, we have a motion, uh, by Bob, second by Daniel, any other discussion?
I just don't think we need to be paying our employees additional money to do their job, so.
They quit, Jay, he was the IT director, he's gone.
That's not him talking about.
I get what you're saying, but how do you overcome that? I mean, you, you can't, for, th, these are done outside the normal working hour, some of it is, I mean, I'm at all of it maybe, but some of it is.
They're salaried employees, I mean, they're salaried employees.
But, I think, what is the difference between exempt, non-exempt, that kinda stuff for, can we pay overtime or not? I mean-
Well, I, if they have a managerial position and there's a, a listing, Bob, of, of, of responsibilities that would qualify as a management-level employee, they're, they're exempt under.
But, but you normally have to supervise an employee or something more than one-
Hiring and firing responsibilities, there's several.
Before, when the new board takes over, that we actually address this and come up with a, an establishment that costs, really, truly, the circuit clerk's not gonna do any of this work, our existing employees are gonna do the work, just like they always have, except they're gonna get paid more money for it.
I don't, I don't agree, but when we had the problem, just last time, I called Becky Boyd and she was right in the middle of it, and she was checking everything to make sure that-
As she always does, that's her job.
You said she didn't do anything.
No, I'm telling us the tabulation, and she can't do that, and doing all the equipment, she's not gonna do that, iron's that far, so, just like they always have.
Alright, I'll tell you what.
But besides that, we still need to get heart here. We still need to get heart here to, uh, the day of the election, and we need to get on it pretty quick before it's too late, 'cause we aren't gonna have our IT director here.
Is that part of our service agreement with heart?
My suggestion is we subcontract this out to Jay, we know Jay's gonna be here in the next four years, you know, and he can be the oversight and do the-
I don't know, why not, shoot, Jay, he can pay me ten thousand, I'd be glad to do it, you know?
He can take the bomb because, uh, we're, the board's gonna get it anyway, you know, if something goes wrong.
Could I, to, to Jay's point about heart, I honestly, I don't, I don't see a, a problem with having that backstop available? If, if you're asking, if you're, if the board decides to go forward with this item that's before you for discussion right now and potential action, if y'all decide to go forward and authorize this, my suggestion would be to ask Ms. Becky to inquire and to determine what is the appropriate role for heart. If she's gonna undertake this responsibility, she needs to be communicating with them, using her staff to communicate with them, to determine what would be the role, and then come back to you guys with, uh, as soon as possible with what they-
I don't think we'll meet in time to get heart down here, will we? That's what I'm saying, we need to do it today.
But they would need to, the inquiry need to start today.
Well, why don't we just authorize them coming and giving onsite support the day of the election?
Do we got a ballpark figure?
I don't, we don't. But we need it, I mean-
Now, I agree with you, because if one or two people don't show up that day, they get it sick, the old shrimp boil rule, you know, somebody gets sick the night before and they don't come to work the next day, you got a debacle on your hands.
We always have that, we always have that problem.
Yeah, but it's one or two people critical.
Well, the last time, the last election, you know, Marcus was very critical in, in troubleshooting, and you just gotta have somebody capable of doing that, and by now, we don't have anybody.
That's right.
Yet.
Yeah, so, I guess we'll have that discussion later today, have we got any IT candidates?
Yeah, we do, he's coming in after our IT session.
Oh.
Alright. Get him started.
Well, I don't think he'll be here in time if we do, you know, so, he wouldn't know any of the equipment anyway.
Alright, Mr. President, can I suggest that we just act on item K, and if we need to discuss further the heart component, we will add that.
I'd just like to have a price on heart, I mean, we, we paid him so much money already, I'm in agreeance, he need to be down here, I just like to, I don't wanna give him a blank check.
No.
Well, they're not gonna know what we- I think they have a base rate and that's it, they're not gonna-
They can ballpark it, yeah.
Charge anything, ex, oh, is there a fee that you're not willing to pay?
No, well, yeah, I mean, five million dollars? Two million dollars, one million dollars, I mean, there's some numbers that I just don't like here.
I was just saying, I was just saying, 'cause we're not meeting again, that's all.
No, I agree with you.
About, what do you think?
I don't remember what we paid last time.
Five thousand?
Four, five thousand, I think, you know, 'cause you gotta pay for them to get here, and, and just for one person, I would think.
Yeah, I just say not to exceed five grand.
Yeah, hopefully they got staff available.
Can, can I suggest again, Mr. President, let's take item K, that's clean, and then we'll take up the heart discussion.
Alright, uh, Bob made the motion, I second to approve item K, which would be to continue with what we've done over the last couple of elections, and Becky and some of her staff handle, uh, election day and, and night. Alright, all in favor? Any opposed?
Negative.
Alright, I'm gonna vote against bringing heart in.
Does that mean nay or just negative?
I am not voting in favor of doing this, but, great enough, clear.
But you wanna give that money to somebody that's not even from Rankin County or Mississippi or has anything to do, I mean, other than they sold us some equipment we can't use much of.
No, I, I just want some security, somebody who knows what they doing.
Well, that, obviously, these other people know what they're doing, 'cause we've had a couple of successful elections.
Mr. President, if I may suggest that we add an item, which would be a discussion and potential action to employ contract with Hart Inter-Civic Incorporated for the purpose of election day troubleshooting support. That would be the item to add.
I make the motion to add that to the agenda.
Yeah, second.
Alright, Bob makes a motion, Jay second to add it to the agenda of bringing in heart for our election. All in favor? All opposed? Nay.
I make a motion, I make a motion we do it, I'm gonna bump it up a little bit. I'm scared what's gonna happen, if you think four to five, I'm scared we're about fifty-five hundred dollars, and we're gonna be messed up until the next board meeting, so, I'm gonna go up to about seventy-five, about to exceed seventy-five hundred on the fee, uh, for heart.
Is it one person or one or two, or whatever?
Just one.
I think they, they will, they will- I think they will, they will assign an employee, this is my recollection, they will assign an employee. The standard agreement requires some sort of reimbursement for travel expenses, some sort of per diem, and there's a, there's a flat rate fee, and you get a bank of hours associated with that type of twenty-four-hour period to cover all of, all of the costs associated with that.
There was some tabulation laws we had last night, Marcus had to figure out, nobody else could do it.
I made the motion, Mr. President, that I'm to exceed seventy-five hundred.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion not to exceed seventy-five hundred, Jay seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
And the previous vote was, I think, three to two or something like that.
I think it was four one. I think it was four one. Something like that.
Three and a half.
We seem to be stuck in a rut.
All right.
All right, item L is a discussion of the logistics and the timing and the potential cost of moving our Chancery Court, Chancery Clerk Court services, our Justice Court, our Justice Court Clerk, and the prosecutor furnishings, fixtures, equipment, filing from the existing facilities in the Chancery Court and the Justice Court operations that we currently have over to the new facility, assuming it ever gets finalized. But at some point, there is a process of moving all of that material, furniture, fixtures, equipment that is leaving and going to the new facility. I think that is the case to some degree, that there will be some existing. Correct, so there has to be a process to move that, to get that handled, and that has not been discussed, it's not a part of the contract for the construction, and so we need to, we need to get it out in front on the table to discuss. So this is just a discussion item, how would y'all propose?
Can we vote on anything that's, this board voting anything that's going to happen in next term?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay, I didn't want to know if we could bind, you know, somebody to do that work.
There are some limitations.
Because it's not going to be complete before January.
It's, there are some limitations, and those are generally, generally, those are related to road and to EOC. Those two areas generally have some barriers put on them. There's not any sort of prohibition on your voting on items that are not of that type with respect to the.
Any suggestions of who would be the logistic manager of this thing, or who wants to take on that responsibility? I can think, Wanda would probably do an excellent job as county administrator, or, you know, or Laura, why isn't she still here?
Or maybe Mike Harrison probably could do it, too.
Poor Mike Word. You know, there's a bunch of Mikes back there, you know?
Poor Mike, man, just in a.
Maybe the sheriff can do it, maybe the sheriff can do it.
Sheriff might be good.
Or building department.
Hey, Buster's been good at stuff like this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure, as fast as, hey, as fast as Buster moves around here, you know, you never know. Take one box at a time.
Two Mikes and a truck.
Yeah, two Mikes and a bus.
Let me ask a question from a liability standpoint on us doing the move, or, you know, I know what's coming, is to put the burden on the sheriff and the trustees to make this happen. What is the liability in case somebody gets hurt moving, or, you know, anything like that?
It's no different than any other item of activity that we ask any of our personnel to undertake. If they're county employees, it's exactly the same, it'd be a workers' cost type matter, Bob, it would be, it would just be part of the normal process of how the county entertains these kinds of operations. My initial thought was that, to the extent that it would overburden the sheriff's operations to try to use trustee help on that, that either some, some amount of trustee help could, could be employed, to the extent the sheriff's able to provide that, and then backfill that with, with some sort of outsourced operation, some, some sort of contract.
The question on the outsourcing, is that going to be required for bid? Have we went with that out for bid?
Potentially, yes, sir, it could be. And I would anticipate, well, it depends on how we look at that. It's probably a service, and so we may be able to get around that, but the board always has the ability, always, to ask for proposals, even if it's exempt from the bid law. You can, you can say, we would like proposals.
Why don't we do that, start with, if it's over fifty thousand, we'll bid it out?
Which is why we're having this discussion.
Who can help set up that proposal? Who can we get to help do that, create a proposal for us to put out there to see?
I think a team on our side of the table would be me and Ms. Wanda, maybe Ms. Laura, and maybe Ms. Bridget can help us find some, some guides.
There she is, you want in on?
So that, that would be my suggestion to start the process. The reason this is a discussion item now is that we probably need to go on a lockdown, if you're going to outsource, we need to get that process underway so we can get numbers and get a commitment, because honestly, this is a, a significant undertaking that is going to have to occur within a very tight time window. You're talking about court processes that don't allow for downtime, so I'm envisioning this happening sometime in the spring, around a weekend timeframe.
Long card, Larry?
More than likely, this is going to be a very tight.
Spring?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Again, man, we just gave another month the other day.
You got Carl sitting right behind you, looking at you.
I know, I feel Carl behind you, but just, just looking at this realistically, knowing the weather situation we're about to get in, despite the fact that we're hoping to be dried in and turning our attention primarily to the interior of the facility, the problem that I'm envisioning is that there will still be aspects of this facility that are trying to be buttoned up on over into the new year, which more than likely will not lend itself to a bunch of foot traffic moving stuff in.
All right.
All right, so you got to, Larry's going to represent the Chancery system, or he'll appoint somebody to help you coordinate.
Yeah, I fully expect us to have several individuals who can help us identify.
The Justice Court side.
We need to obviously have discussions, not only of finding and outsource, but also get feedback from the court systems that are impacted in terms of scheduling, and then just the manpower requirement and the, how it is that we're going to take systems offline, get them moved, and then get them back up.
Do you need a motion for that, or you just?
I don't think we do, I think what we want to hear from the board is that you would like for your staff to put together some sort of RFP that could be used for some sort of outsourced moving help on this particular project. All right, so that's, that's your indication, that's what we'll do. We'll try to have word back to you pretty soon. Item M is a discussion of providing for generator backup to the Rankin County Courthouse Annex Building, that's this building, this building does not have generator backup. You've got the Chancery Clerk's office, you've got the Tax Service Office, you've got the Tax Collector's Office, all of which, when the power goes down, they're down. And so the idea is for preservation of data, for the ability of systems to stay operational. If they're in the middle of a transaction, you got to, it's just always been a problem that this facility is not connected to any generator backup.
Do we have a cost on a generator added to it?
We, originally, we asked, I, I asked Johnny if he would look at some potential costs. Things change quickly, and we don't have anybody that's looking at it.
Why do we need a generator here? I mean, if power's out, nobody's going to work anyway.
I think the doors are.
Doors in the back.
Doors will open up when the power goes off.
Besides generator, tough.
Marcus said that we got backups to have them shut. Before he left, he did.
Fuck K doesn't do that, you think?
Whatever that was. And the doors are open up here for. You have one mind.
Really?
Back door, yeah. How does it, I guess, I think the biggest person impact potentially would be the tax collector over there, money and dealing with people and, I know you got the records, but yeah, I know that, talks about an immediate need to solve would be the tax collector.
Yeah, we put in some, clerk, yeah, we put in UPS system years ago, we bought, we just borrowed it out of our fund, we bought some battery backups, which will stay up for a while, but it doesn't, it ain't going to last for, if power was out forty-eight hours, so not long long it'll last. But most important thing besides that was our back doors, you know, people just wandered into the building, and you got all those records, those records back there, back years, year, year, years, and you don't want them to be destroyed or lost or whatever, you don't want people to wander up in there. Not that they would, but the jails out there, when people get out of jail.
Come over and read a few records.
I guess if they could just take our new maintenance guy and have him price it out and figure out if we can tie into the other ones.
I think Johnny had looked at putting us in the jail together or something, but for some reason, that wouldn't work.
Let's know why, because it says what KW is.
Yep.
You know, what this generator next door, I don't know how big it is, they one time over discussion, many, many years ago, and it never got done, was taking that generator power off, they just, you know, running out of here for that, but I'm not sure that KW, that building over there probably designed just for that building.
It may be, it may not be enough.
Do you need board, do you need board action for that?
If it's just the locks, they could probably do it just for the locks and not the AC and stuff.
Just go get some prices.
All right, we're in the same place on this one as we were the last, we're going to look at some cost and see what fits best and what, but headed in the right direction.
Gentlemen, if we, if we may, I want to, I want to come back to item N, if you don't mind, and let's pick up item O. Item O was a discussion of and a potential action to adopt a resolution that supports a review by the Mississippi Legislature of the balance between the rights of victims of crime and the criminally accused. Legislature last session passed a House concurrent resolution that would have led to a ballot initiative providing for additional protections for victims of crime. That concurrent resolution was passed by the House, it did not pass the Senate, and so therefore, there was no ballot initiative for this particular election. So, the proponents of a, of a movement called Marcy's Law, M-A-R-S-Y apostrophe S, has approached the board and requested a resolution in support of the, the potential of the legislature to pass concurrent resolutions that would lead to a ballot initiative that would ultimately lead to a vote of the people as to whether or not to amend the Constitution of the state of Mississippi to provide specific rights for victims of crime, okay? And so this movement is a national movement, started in California, and it's making its way across the country. At this point in time, there have been ten states that have adopted some form of additional victims' rights protections and have embedded those in their state constitutions, right? So that's the proposal, you would be simply adopting a resolution in support of a review by our legislature as to whether or not what is already provided for in Mississippi law is appropriate, is sufficient, or not. You're not being asked to support any specific way of addressing that, you're just simply saying, we think it's a good idea for the legislature to review this and to determine whether or not there needs to be additional protections placed into the Constitution. We are one of a very few states that has already amended its constitution to provide specifically for victims' rights. That was done in nineteen ninety-eight, and by a ninety-three percent vote of the citizens of the state of Mississippi, to put that in our Constitution. So the idea now that has, that has come forward is, we may need to revisit what was done in ninety-eight to determine whether there's needs to be more done, okay? I want to add this, the resolution that I have put together, by the way, I just found my bond documents. Ms. Laura will be back in a minute, and she will not be happy.
She'll never know.
Okay, thank you, we'll keep that to ourselves.
Recording.
What I have, I want to read one particular section of this resolution that I put together and make sure that you guys are on board. There is this, there's always this natural tension that develops between the rights of the criminally accused under our laws and the rights of crime victims, there's a tension that is there, and it's a byproduct of the way that our system was initiated by the first Continental Congress back in the late seventeen hundreds, and the Constitution of the United States was put together with specific protections for criminally accused, and there was not a commensurate protection for victims of crime. That balance has been at tension ever since, and so this is a nationwide movement to introduce protections within the context of the Constitution, instead of just whatever a judicial system or a civil court might come up with in terms of protections. There have been some unintended consequences that have happened across the country that have, that are provable. These consequences have led to some later actions where they adopted these new protections and embedded them in their Constitution. They had to come back the next year, in one case, and try to fix some of the unintended consequences that came about as a result of additional protections being put in the law. There were added costs to law enforcement, there were added costs to court systems, there were added lengths of time to get a case through the court system because of specific notification requirements that were then embedded in their constitutions, notifications to victims about hearings and how they can participate in those hearings. And it got to the point where it was somewhat silly, because some of the, some of the people and entities that qualified as victims were Walmart on shoplifting and other businesses that were burglarized, and these were business entities that had absolutely no desire whatsoever to participate in that process, but because of the law, they were being required to be given notice and contacted, and then you found your law enforcement people and your court system people, they could never find somebody that could answer for Walmart. And so court cases just got knocked off the rails on the timeline because of the language. That's an unintended consequence that needed to be addressed, and so in the case of South Dakota, they amended their Constitution, they came back the next year and said, you know what, that was a bridge too far, and we need to tweak this. Thankfully, the Marcy's Law people joined together with South Dakota and got the changes that needed to be made, made without having to repeal the whole law. And so this language I want to point out to you, and I just gave you the examples of additional costs and delays, it is these additional costs to court systems and law enforcement agencies, costs that must be borne by the taxpayers of counties in Mississippi, that should be carefully considered as a part of this deliberative process. Potential delays in court proceedings caused by victim notification responsibilities should also be considered. So the Rankin County Board Supervisors counsels and encourages the state legislature to seek input from state and local law enforcement agencies and representatives of district attorneys, prosecutors, and court personnel, both at the state and local level, before passing any valid initiative. So what I've tried to do is to construct what I think is a well-balanced resolution, where the board says, you know what, we are one hundred percent in favor of protecting victims, and we are one hundred percent in favor of providing for rights of victims, but we want to be really careful about how we do that, and we want to avoid the same unintended consequences that we've seen in other places.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion?
If I need any clarity, can I come to you on that?
Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Back to item N, Mr. President, and we'll get the, we'll get that resolution signed and provided to you guys so that you can provide it to whomever with the organization that would need a copy of it. Back to item N, which is discussion of and potential action to clarify our list of projects that will be funded by the proceeds of the twenty nineteen. that will be funded by the proceeds of the twenty nineteen Rankin County General Obligation Bond Issuance. Back on May the sixteenth, the Board adopted a list, the initial, what I'll call the initial list of bond projects. Uh, and that was provided to you guys by way of a memorandum. Uh, and, uh, it listed, uh, in, up to and in the amount of almost twenty-four million dollars various bond projects with estimated costs. Um, all of those projects on that initial list have been carried over on subsequent discussions about the bond issue. There has been some, I think there's been some discussion about the estimated costs. There's also been some discussion about exactly how we're classifying how these projects were described initially. But your staff is going to need some real clarity on which projects are going to be funded by the bond and which projects that were initially discussed may not be funded by the bond. And this is for purposes of being able to track the pro- bond proceeds and to account for the expenditure of the bond proceeds, which is something that the state auditor is gonna require us to be pretty tedious about. And so if we don't know what the Board's pleasure is with respect to bond projects and we see invoices coming in, we've got to be able to classify those accurately. All right, so that's the purpose of this discussion, and we need to go through these lists uh, and, and make sure that we're on the same page about those. All right? So that's what it is. How do y'all wanna handle that? I've got one copy. Yeah, do you mind? So what I've got for you is the May sixteenth document. I've got a copy of the May sixteenth document. I have a copy of the updated, uh, bond project list, June twenty-seventh. We have, uh, the draft document dated eight, eight, twenty nineteen, provided by government consultants that had all of the bond projects listed in their pro forma. And then we have finally the listing of projects that you guys authorize for reimbursement using bond proceeds. All of those documents together should provide us a, a complete picture of your bond project list.
Does somebody wanna order lunch? It's gonna be a.
I want to go ahead and have that Wanda be the one that watches.
Yes, sir. If we can, we'll get those copied for you, and then we'll come back to item N again if that's, if that's suitable.
Yeah, I think that works.
Um, item A, requesting approval of the amended fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, approval of the two thousand nineteen certification from the Department of Revenue for authority to expand the one mil levy and transfer to general county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, requesting authority to accept the two thousand twenty Pierce Freightliner Responder Pumper from Emergency Equipment Professionals Incorporated for the Shale Road Fire Department as of October two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, authority for the Board President to sign contract documents for Rankin County Emergency Operations Re-roofing Project with M and S Roofing.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I think we oughta make Craig read the rest of them. No, I'm sorry, E, no, E's part of the deal. So I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah.
You wanna do item A?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay, item A, discussion of and potential action on awarding the county insurances with the renewal date on November first, two thousand nineteen as follows. The county property with insurance associates through One Beacon in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Auto insurance with Kirby Wellington Insurance Agency through F C C I in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The general liability with insurance associates through One Beacon in the amount of ninety-five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And fire services insurance with Wellington Associates through A A I C in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And authority to sign the documents and issue checks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, any opposed? Motion passes. Boy, they barely kept it under a million dollars, did they? Yeah, those numbers.
Okay, item F, authority to publish the public notices to conduct an open test of the Verity Scanner and Touchwriter Voting Devices at the Rankin County Election Equipment Vault at six hundred Marquette Road behind Region Eight Office in Brando, Mississippi on November first, two thousand nineteen, beginning at nine A M. And if needed, on November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, beginning at nine A M.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion?
I have one question, uh, or I was received a phone call from the Democrat Party, and we need to make sure that they are invited to this training and that they're included. We don't need to leave them out, for sure.
I agree.
All right, any other, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I was Craig.
Yes, sir, if, if I may, Mr. President, uh, just by way of explanation, under item G, uh, you'll see, uh, the numbered listing of projects, one through six, and subprojects thereunder. What I want you to do is turn to the top of the next page, and, and this will be the explanation for all of the stuff on the previous page. So the above list of projects, it says, and purchases are exempt under the provisions of nineteen eleven twenty-seven, which states that the code section nineteen eleven twenty-seven does not apply to contracts, leases, lease-purchase contracts that are executed pursuant to the bidding requirements of section thirty-one seven thirteen, that's the bid law, and approved by unanimous, unanimous vote of the Board. And then there's a finding of the Board of Supervisors that the issuance of the purchase orders and the expenditure of the funds to pay the resulting invoices is essential to the efficiency and economy of the operation of county government. So that's what you're acting on for each of those items. My suggestion would be that you move to adopt the findings and to approve the expenditures listed, G one through six, without us having to read all this stuff.
Why, is this because of the, uh, end of the term stuff?
Yes, that's correct. Nineteen eleven twenty-seven is the code section that, uh, places parameters on road projects, road equipment purchases, lease-purchase contracts. It puts parameters on that and restricts it to twenty-five percent of the road budget.
So where is the finding?
The finding's what I read at the top of the next page.
So is it?
It's essential to the efficiency and economy of the operation of county government.
That doesn't have its own letters, is what I'm saying.
No, no, sir, it's just a finding that you're making about each of those.
All right, I make motion to approve the finding and items.
One through six, under G.
Yes, one through six, under G.
Second.
All right, Jay makes motion.
He gonna say, did Bishop and Bob post make the same, I mean, they're on the same motion.
Yeah, on this one, yeah, this.
Write that down. I'm voting for it. If them two are agreeing with it, I'm for it.
Jay makes motion, uh, that would be one through six, under G. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
I felt like I missed something, Bob and Jay. I mean, Jay and Bob seconds, Jay, I missed something, I didn't read something. I don't know, I don't know, I just.
So much, yeah, I feel like I missed something.
I thought we've always worked well together.
This is the grand finale, I think, coming down the end.
I suggest we go ahead and get that Carl get out of here before we get into bond proceeds.
I appreciate that. Um, I guess I've got the one thing that's on the agenda, and then just, I've got some information for you too that I think will be good. But, uh, on the agenda, there's two items on DHS. Uh, one, uh, is proposed change order for twenty-one hundred fifty dollars. One of them is to raise five roof vents. Uh, we have to, when we inspected the roof or looked at the roof for re-roofing, there's about twenty roof vents on there, and we thought it was all just to vent the attic. But actually, five of them are connected to, I guess, exhaust fans, so they had to be raised. And then the second thing was that, when we were dealing with Johnny, there was some discussion about not spending money to change the color of the, of the roof, and that green. We changed it to bronze, but the downspout boots didn't get changed, so they just need to be painted, if it's okay. We still got twenty thousand dollar contingency in the project, so if you, if the Board approves that, that'll leave a, a balance of seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty. They'll be coming back to the county, and this is the last item to finish up with on the DHS roofing. But that's the official item on that, that we would recommend approval of that change order.
I make a motion to approve the change order.
All right, Bob makes motion to approve the change order. Do we have a second? I seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And this is, since this is on the agenda, this is obviously to give this to informational purposes at this point. Uh, the misdemeanor facility is basically through, uh, they've completed their punch list. There is gonna be a final change order, but it's gonna be a credit of money coming back to the county. And what you see in that item one is, there's a couple of things that they still have to do. Uh, add some access control that was requested by the Sheriff's Department. And of course, y'all approved these at the last meeting. This will work. But there's gonna be credits, and you'll see there's a balance remaining in the contingency allowance, the security allowance, and utility allowance. So those all will be coming back to the county. And then the biggest credit coming back to the county, if you remember, uh, back eight, ten months ago, they found bad dirt over at the misdemeanor facility, and y'all approved in change order two, uh, up to, not to exceed something like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, the, the extension, the extensive work that was required did not require removing all that dirt. It turned out to be not quite as deep as I thought. So there'll be a credit of seventy-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents for that. But the bottom line is in the next, in the final pay application, there will be a change order of eighty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents, which will be returned to the county. Uh, now where they at right now, and I just gave, uh, Ms. Wanda the next pay app, which I'm not asking y'all to approve since it wasn't on the agenda yet. But, uh, ninety-five thousand dollars is, is pay app. And that, uh, that leaves a remaining balance of two hundred and one thousand in the contract now. Out of that two hundred and one thousand, this eighty-two thousand nine thirty-two will be deducted. And then the rest of that money, or most of it, a hundred and four thousand is retained each that you've been withholding on the project. So the next change order will be, I mean, the next pay application will be mostly, uh, will be money being returned to the contractor, which y'all have been holding as retainees, and it'll be a credit. I'm just letting you know, that's what's coming on the final chain, on the final pay application for the misdemeanor. As soon as I get finished with that. So that, that's the misdemeanor project. Do y'all have any questions on any of that? I just went through quickly.
I'm good.
Getting money back, that's always a good thing.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, this, this one don't, you don't, we've already paid it, it's just we don't feel it again.
Yeah, well, that's true. Well, you hadn't, you've approved it, it hadn't been spent, that's right. So you're getting money back, uh, it's just holding there. The next two items on re-roofing, and, uh, I think I just went through the re-roofing on DHS change order. The third one is, is on the re-roofing of the E O C building, and this is a, something that we, we've been looking at with the roofer. Uh, and Dan, you weren't here last, last meeting when, when, uh.
Thank goodness.
Our original estimate on the re-roofing of the, of the E O C building was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The bids actually came in at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, uh, which was because we had very good participation. And if you remember, there was an option that there to add some metal siding, uh, eighty-four hundred dollars, and we recommended not doing that at that time, uh, because we knew this was coming about. So we, we talked to the roof, roofing guy, and what we think is a better solution is to still take out the metal panels, but add them, make them heavier gauge, uh, panels, which would be six thousand dollars more than eighty-four hundred that was in the alternate, a total of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. But these, these metal panels will be concealed fasteners as opposed to existing. And by doing that, we're gonna be able to change from the hardy board soffit and go back to a metal soffit. And then, since these will be from the same roofing manufacturer, the county will have a, a continuous warranty of roof and metal panels all by one, one group.
Well, these gonna be, is that, is that standing seam? Is that what you're talking about concealed?
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna be continual run, not have any joints in it?
It'll have a joint, but they'll be concealed, they'll overlap as opposed to.
No, I'm talking about one run. If it's, if it's fifty feet, it'll be one run fifty feet.
Yeah, but it won't be that long, I don't think.
No, I'm saying that's the way they need to do it.
Yeah, right.
They can run those sheets, one sheet.
Right.
And you can run them on site.
Right.
So, and, but it'd be standing seam, 'cause that's pretty flat.
It is, it is, and it's a heavier, we were look, we were going back, again, what we were really concerned about when we specified this was the budget not exceeding the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So we went with a more economical system. It's not as good, it was going back to what was there, which is exposed fasteners. In our opinion, going to concealed fasteners, as you're talking about, prevents, it's less likelihood of leaking. Uh, you don't have to worry about the fasteners wearing out and then having to replace them. Uh, and then you get the same warranty from the same company, so if something happens, you don't have to go looking in. And then, since it's heavier, it won't be any maintenance. It's, it's, it's just about eliminates maintenance on these items.
You say heavier, what, what were, were they going?
It was going from twenty-six to twenty-four gauge. The original was twenty-six, and, and trying to match what was there, it became evident that there was only one company that handled that light gauge panel. With the twenty-four gauge, that opened it up.
No, that's, that's much better.
Yeah, and, and so if you, if the Board decides to do that, and again, I haven't done the change order, I'm just trying to just give you information. There's still a twenty thousand dollar contingency, so there'd be fifty-six hundred dollars left. Now, we do include in that contract unit cost, we specify a certain amount of, of wood decking and insulation that may have to be replaced because there were leaks. So we're anticipating there's gonna be some, uh, that's in the base bid that would have to be replaced. But we also had a unit cost in case it was greater than what we anticipated. So you would still have probably fifty-six hundred dollars to cover any of that that would come up.
Sure is rotten wood under there.
There's some, and we, we know that, we specified an amount that's in the base bid, we just don't know how much. It may not be much more, and maybe some more. But that, they won't know that till they tear that roof off. So that's where we're at, and, and again, I'm not on the agenda for that, and that's my fault 'cause I didn't really inform Janice of that, and I'll take my beating on that. But we'll come to the next meeting and officially, but just so y'all know, that's what's coming, if you have any questions.
Well, are you gonna have any additional information or whatever at the next one than what you just gave us? Why don't we just add it instead of covering this ground twice? Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Is that all right with you, Craig? All right, I make a motion that we add Carl in this matter with this roof, uh, E O C to the agenda.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second by Daniel. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion passes to add it. Now then, uh, I make the motion that we approve this change order, I guess is what we can call it. Uh, I, I think this is something that me, I talked with Mike Word about several weeks ago, and it fits right in with what he expected that we should do. Uh, so I make the motion that we do it.
Second.
No, it'll be thirty minutes.
You can't let him talk, we're gonna be here to two. When he dresses up like that, it's gonna go longer, I'm just telling you.
All right, Mike, is it something, is it?
What I remember on our pre-construction meeting, if you do decide to do this, and Mr. Franco has, maybe just hasn't made it to this point yet, all your soffit and fascia completely wrapped in the entire building, at that point, would be metal, is that?
That's correct.
As opposed to hardy board, there'd be nothing painted at all.
Yeah, he explained that to us about thirty minutes ago.
He didn't say the entire building, because it was, I, I, yes.
You just gonna make sure it is, though, right?
All right, I made a motion, Daniel second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Franco.
I, I do have one other thing.
I didn't know that.
There's a comment, when y'all are doing the furniture on the previous thing, there is a lot of new furniture, so you need to tag what's existing, or what you're not gonna bring over because we've got all this high-density shelving, and you won't need to bring over the two or three hundred square feet.
Yeah, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with all the stuff we're not gonna move.
Right, uh, just. Right.
Stay close.
Right, sir.
Just as a note.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question?
Carl, do you need us to add this pay application number one for M&amp;S on the DHS building? Or do you give us this one?
Uh, yes.
But we don't need to add this one on misdemeanor for 95.
Y'all can do it today if you want. I just brought it for y'all's.
But the 95 does have to be paid now, even before with all the credits.
Right, 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 right.
Can we go ahead and add these two pay?
I make a motion to add them.
This first one is for pay application number one, M&amp;S Roofing in the amount of $36,898, and the second one will be the misdemeanor pay application number 20 in the amount of $95,258.
Motion to add it.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to add. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Carl.
All right. Bond issue, let's hurry up. Bob doesn't get anything, that's it.
Everybody in favor of that?
You want to do that right now? Mr. President, if we can take about a two-minute, can we take about a two-minute?
Why are we doing this right now?
Sir, why are we doing?
Why are we doing this right now?
Well, the, the purpose of it is to get clarity for the staff, because we're already getting invoices in.
I'll tell, I'll tell them what I want to know.
Yeah. We need to know how to code the payments accurately and correctly so that we avoid consistently having to go back after the fact and make journal entries in our accounting system to correct where the money should have been coded versus where it was. We get popped constantly because of journal entries, and our auditors do not, for some reason, cannot understand that those are corrective measures. They are not actually money moving from one account to another, and they ding us and make us come up with cockamamie documentation to explain why we're just correcting the books. If y'all can help us solidify the bond projects, we will have good clarity on how, in fact,